Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And I wanted to start out tonight with a quick thought about the Veterans Day festivities on Sunday were terrific. I think even in Mark Sadowell's article, he mentioned that it was one of the best attended. So I think it's a growing celebration that we should be doing in town. I think that it's, the music was fabulous, speakers were great. I think we do a good job honoring the veterans. And to tie in with that, I've been getting a few phone calls from veterans, and I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, about starting our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. And I think with veterans calling us on that, and also being Veterans Day week, I think to honor the veterans with starting to say the pledge of allegiance would be the least we could do. We never can pay them back in full for all they do for us. I think they are really our heroes, not sports people. Heroes are the ones that risk their lives and change their lives to protect ninety-nine percent of us, the one percent that do the rest. So I'd like to start out with the pledge of allegiance. And the flags are behind me, just in case, so if we could just stand and take a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Jerry, do we have any public participation tonight?
No.
No one signed in? Okay. All right, so we're moving on to two. So presentation action items, Tall Spire preschool.
I had really hoped to come forward to this board with a, like of a draft lease agreement, and something that we could do to help out the, our friends at the Tall Spire school. Couple of things had to happen for them to look at Herd School. Number one is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education needed to okay it. And while they were okay with the space, we need to do, we need to do some testing. We needed to test the water for potability, and we needed to test for lead paint. That being that children under six-year-old would be there. Unfortunately, lead paint tests came back with lead all over the windows, all over the window sashes. So in order to bring that school up to code for that purpose, and this is a moral issue, we wouldn't want anybody in there to get exposed to lead paint either. It would cost the Tall Spire probably a thousand dollars a window. There are over, well, probably way more than a thousand dollars a window. There's about forty big windows on the first floor of that school. I've been in touch with Kathy Relihan, who runs the school. That is something that they, it would take weeks or months to get that done anyway, to get a contractor in. They're looking at other alternatives, and I'll keep the board informed. So I feel very badly, we've been in touch with her all through the process, actually helping her look at some other areas in town that we don't own. But for many reasons, most of all, that we can't have children under six in a facility we own that has lead paint, we're unable to accommodate them at this time. So just wanted to let the board know that, they know that. I imagine their staff and teachers know that by now, too. So to the parents, we are very sorry, we tried. That's about a half an hour on that. Thank you.
Right, that's a big disappointment. I thought the herd was gonna be all set, but it is what it is. Any comments on that, or questions? But they're moving forward with other possibilities, right?
They are.
Okay, moving on to A-frames. Paul, do you want to say something about A-frames?
I would just, from the beginning, just to get everybody up to speed. Last year, the Main Streets organization came forward with a trial period for the A-frames within the town. They purchased fifty A-frames, and it was a lottery of who obtained the fifty. The businesses used them as they should, to their benefit. They were well-received by the public. There were no calls that I can recall on. So we worked towards making it a permanent structure for them to utilize. We had a couple of meetings, we had all departments review the comments within the document that you have before you on your screens. The DPW looked at it closely, Town Council did, and so did Mr. Mayo. Mr. Mayo could probably go over the finer points in regards to the restrictions. But this would be taking it from a temporary use to making it a permanent use. It would longer as the businesses open. So if a business had one, they can put it out from the moment that they opened the doors, and they take it in the moment they close their doors. So it's a seven-day operation for some of them, as they so wish, but that would be their choice. Mr. Mayo?
What was very interesting to me in meeting with the merchants is that a number of them said that this, the having the sign and the pilot program substantially increased their business. And, which I think is what this board has been talking about, all about is really helping them out. So that, you know, A, did it help them, and a lot of them said that it really did. They also wanted to make sure that they could have kind of a fine line between uniformity and also being a little creative on their own. And so I think we tried to find that middle ground here with adopting a type of sign and a size of sign, and allowing them to be a little bit creative on it. A lot of them like to write what their specials are, whether it's, you know, shepherd pie, or, you know, special sandwich, or, you know, ten percent sale, they liked that ability. So we put in here both white boards and black boards, which they really wanted to have. Put a certain size in there. And most importantly, for them and for the pedestrians, making sure the area was ADA compatible. And there wasn't a merchant that came to that meeting that wasn't for that. They were all really pretty much on the same page. So it is a rule and regulation that we're submitting of the board, excuse me, for the signed boards by the Town Council, so it can change. Another thing that was important, that the town is held harmless for anything that could happen with that, including if they leave it out and it gets hit by a snowplow, that's their problem, not ours. We will require that they, not get, that they register them with the town, so we know where they are. We'll give them a sticker, so, you know, if they by chance leave it out at night and some kid picks it up and puts it somewhere, maybe we can find it. But we'd like to know where they are and how many there are. And they'll just have to register that with the Department of Public Works. We also, between the Department of Public Works and myself, we will go around to make sure they do apply, comply with the ADA requirements. We also didn't want any streamers or things all over them, because it just kind of looks like a mess and they blow and they hit people in the face. So I thought we hit a middle ground with the merchants. They seem pretty happy with this. So I would suggest, and Town Council reviewed this for the legality of it, I would suggest that, and with Councilor Genaco, that we do move forward on this and see how creative they can be. And I think I sent you one of my favorite signs, which was in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, which no one bid on, saying whether it was about me, Town Council, or Town Council.
Right.
I thought that was interesting. With that, we'll take any questions.
Sure.
I think it's a great program. I'm really glad to hear that there was, not only kind of anecdotal, but really people felt that it increased the business. So that's great. I just had a couple of questions. I went and looked at the zoning, and I just wanted to make sure, because it actually, there's something in that says that portable signs are prohibited, and that special permits can't be given for portable signs?
That's right. That's why this applies only to the public way.
I see. So everything squares with...
Yeah, zoning doesn't generally apply to the public way.
Okay.
It only applies to lots.
Okay.
That's why you can take a public way anywhere, even if you're accessing commercial property from residential, a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
This has to do with people placing A-frames on the public way, which ordinarily they couldn't do, because as custodians of the public way, the Town Council refuses to let anybody obstruct. But you have the right to issue either individual permits, think of like street opening permits, or, in this case, a kind of general license to allow people to put out, you know, a uniform kind of obstruction, so long as they conform with your regulations.
Okay. So as a follow-up to that, then, will there be kind of a permitting process? I was unclear whether everything will be permitted under this fifty original, I mean, will there be like a blanket license or permit, or will each business have to go and get...
They'll have to register. We're really not gonna permit them. It's more of a, and bring us their insurance or what have you. We're not gonna charge them a fee or anything like that. We're gonna let them, you know, be somewhat creative within these parameters. I think the general information is kind of talking about what we did do, the original fifty. So there might be more than fifty, and they're not gonna necessarily buy them through Main Streets.
Okay.
Or get them through Main Streets. That was a concern of theirs. They wanted to make sure they could go out and get something that was classy and similar on their own.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
I think that the idea of A-frames, net, net is a good, is a good plan going forward, and I do think that it's been met with mixed success so far. I wouldn't say that the experience Wakefield on Saturdays has been a great success, but industrial businesses have expressed success. I think there have been a limited number that have participated on a regular basis, from my own observations. I think at this point, given that we're looking at this downtown planning going forward, that it might make more sense for us to have this in place, but adopt it for a year. I'd be interested to see where we land with the planning, with the VHB, et cetera, and the community input. I know one of the issues is, if we're transforming our downtown, what does that mean in terms of spatially, you know, what's it gonna look like? And the idea of the potential for every business, or nearly every business downtown, having that, there might be a clutter issue potentially. I don't know, but I think that I want to help the businesses, but also balance that with not in any way handcuffing the planning or the design processes. So I think it would make more sense for us to enact it for the seven days, go for a year, revisit it. Because while we had a pilot program on Saturdays, this is a different beast altogether. It's a seven-day week, all operating hours. So let's see what we think of that, and come back a year from now, and then maybe do a reassessment and then tweak accordingly. But I think just kind of having it indefinitely gives me a little bit of pause right now, given all that may be changing.
Do you want to say one, one...
Twenty.
Twenty.
Right, right. Well, no, I'm just saying that at least a year from now, we'll review it, and then determine a year from now whether we do it, extend it for more than a year, indefinitely, tweak it, et cetera. But I think right now, doing that for one year feels more comfortable and more in line with keeping an open mind for, you know, all the community input we expect to be having going forward with our development.
So it's on the calendar for one, one twenty, but if something happened in the summer of, you know, 2019, we also could bring it back, too, if we chose.
Absolutely.
Just to let you know, it seems like, I think it's a good idea.
That's perfectly acceptable and fair to everybody.
I think so. I think it just balances the interests for us. So I would make a motion into approve the rules and regulations relative to the A-frame signs with this being in effect through one, one, twenty twenty, to then be reviewed by the Town Council then.
Twenty twenty, yeah, sounds funny. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's a good idea, just to, just have it on the calendar. But I think if anything happened, we certainly could bring it up, you know, midstream. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Ed. Okay, lake events. Tony, do you want to, you're a lake event kind of guy?
Lake event kind of guy. So our lake is very popular for events. People walk around it, events run around it. We have races, we have walks to benefit charities, or, you know, any other causes. These events tend to be expensive for the town and what we do charge them. So I'm looking to increase some of those fees, so that we don't lose money, excuse me, we don't lose as much money when we sponsor events like this. So these are, some of these are larger events, you know, they leave mountains of trash, you know, the wear and tear of the common, they drive trucks in and out of there. You know, they're constantly pounding spikes, they put tents up. So we'll work with them, and, you know, as best we can. And, you know, we do have exemptions for Wakefield's events, Wakefield's only the events that benefit, such as CNA, or, you know, the Festival of the Lake, and things like that. So those will be exempt from fees. But again, it's just looking at some of these other organizations that use our lake, and again, so we don't lose as much money. And if you take a look at your packet, you'll see what the fees are now, and what the proposed ones will be.
I might add, Mr. Timman, is that those fees have not changed since two thousand and two. So they've been a long time. These are, these fees are really only charged to some of the large events, like the Buddy Walk, Angel Fund, that are national charitable organizations that, in my opinion, pay the heads of these organizations very handsomely. So they can certainly afford to cover some of our costs here. And I think that they certainly won't have a difference with, an issue with them at all, in my opinion. The only other changes in here, and it's a red line version that you all received in your packet, is this being old, we replaced Board of Selectmen with Town Council. The practice has been that they're approved by the Town Council's, by the Town Administrator's Office. There's also a section in here that anybody aggrieved by a decision may appeal to the Town Council. I think in the last ten years, we've had one or two groups that I can remember that really abused the privilege of using our wonderful lake, and either left it very messy, or came too early, didn't work well with our staff and our personnel, which is really what happens. They have to work very closely with particularly Supervisor of Forestry and Grounds, who does everything for them to open the gate for them if they forget their key that they've already come to get on Saturday morning. So I think this is, again, trying to find a middle ground. The other thing that we are very cognizant of, and I think when you look at, if you look at our calendar, these groups come in, and the groups that have come, came in on two thousand and eighteen have already booked their two thousand and nineteen date, like within a week afterwards, they send out their next, their next application. They are big, large groups, they're very, very well-attended. I think you'll see some have thousands of people there, and it's worked out very well. This year in particular, seems like we have had less concerns from citizens not involved in the events that we have in the past. I think we've kind of got this down. And we also, what's nice is that a lot of these walks and events don't happen in the heydays of the summer. So there are some open weekends in July and August. And a lot of the citizens really like to have, just go down on their own and read the Sunday paper, or throw a frisbee, or have a little picnic with their family. So we're able to kind of mix that all in there well. Then when you look at September and October, boy, every weekend, often both days are busy. But it seems to have worked out pretty well. They work very well with our police and fire. We have police and fire details at the events of certain sizes to make sure that nothing goes wrong, or if something does go wrong, they're there to help it. So it's actually worked out pretty good.
Steve, just, I know Rick Stinson's not here, he'd probably have it on his tip of his tongue, but what are the average costs of cleanup for, I know that some events are small, some are gigantic, but...
Well, what we do is, yeah, we require them to stack their trash, or in some cases, to take, to get rid of it, carry and carry out. So it does depend on that. But I will say that we probably generated about four thousand dollars in income, thirty-eight hundred maybe, last year? Thirty-eight hundred from the different events. Again, it's not a huge amount, but it does help that we have to reseed, we have to relook at the ground, we've got to mow it a little bit, and trash removal. Most, a lot of them take it out with them, so it's not too bad. When we do have issues is when they don't pick up the trash, and they leave it, and that's, we're pretty quick to contact them.
So we don't have any dollar amounts?
No, no, and it's, and it's not. It'd be hard to, you know, put it in with everything else.
Steve, do we, I have heard what you had mentioned, that people want the lake to be, when they go down there, they want to walk it, and not be mowed over by, you know, people doing their walk, and to, to just enjoy the lake because it's our lake. Is there any, was there any discussion ever about limiting the amount of events we have if it gets to be a little too onerous?
We certainly can. At this point, I think we've kind of hit a middle, we've kind of hit that middle ground.
Okay.
But, you know, a lot of times now, it's filling in, all of these groups are Wakefield affiliated to.
Yeah.
There's always someone from Wakefield that's involved or what have you. So, and a lot of them, the schools will want to go down, St. Joseph's Parish wants to go down, the Savings Bank is having an event this year. So we're very cognizant of that, particularly in July, in September and October.
Yeah.
But in the summer, we, it kind of, once we hit July fourth, it kind of peters out. They're not having the walk, so, you know, it's, you have probably three or four, five, six weeks that aren't so bad.
Okay.
But you're right, it's something we're cognizant of.
Something to think, yeah, if it ever is an issue.
Tony?
So just a handful of the exempt groups, and it's not limited to these. It's CNA, CNA events, Friends of Lake Quanapower events, Fourth of July activities, Common Ground events, and other events designated by us, the Town Council. So we have the ability to exempt any group from these fees.
One of the new events that we have, I think they're calling it Chaos on the Common now, which is the Galvin, and which is really a fun event, if you've been there. And it is aptly named, as I tell you. But it is, that's a real fun event that we do with them, so.
Julie?
This is more broadly written than just the lake, though. I mean, it's called the Playgrounds, Recreational Areas, and Public Ways. And so is this covering things like athletic fields, and block parties in neighborhoods, and all of that as well?
Right. Block parties in neighborhoods are covered by that. Those are kind of limited events. And basically, that is just, they come into our office, usually by email. We contact police and fire, and DPW to make sure it's okay. There are no charges for those. We may give them, put barrels to block the street. The only time that they get denied is if perhaps maybe, I guess they get put on probation for being getting out of hand the year before. Like bonfires in the street, it seemed like we happened on one in Greenwood a few years ago.
I know, it's street, it was not mine.
Was not yours, no.
It was new to us, Tony, wasn't it?
Wasn't, it was not Tony's, but it was.
We're all aware of it.
I think they were on a few weeks. On the other fields for sporting events and stuff like that, that's really handled by the Recreation Department.
So should we call that out in here, then, to say that? I guess I'm a little confused, I guess I just find some of this language a little confusing, and I know it's worked, and I think the intent is all good. I just wonder, I worry a little bit about, and I thought we, I guess I would love to really sit down and think about this a little more, because there are things we've talked about in the past, like when we talked about Farmer's Market, is that covered by this?
Farmer's Market, we give a separate license for.
So that's not, so that's exempt from this as well? It's not the fees, I'm not the least concerned about the fees. I just, I mean, I know we talked about, when we talked about the Farmer's Market, we had said we were looking at this policy, and maybe we could suggest to people using our lake to use local vendors, Wakefield vendors, and to provide them a list.
That's also in the works.
So that's a separate piece to this?
Yes.
So why don't we just do it all at once?
Well, I'd like to jump on these now, as these people book it, instead of...
Okay, because I would like to see things like requiring recycling. I would like to see things like telling, not a butters, but maybe having a master calendar where people who live near some of these could know things that are coming up. I mean, we, right now, we don't kind of have a master list of them. So there's a few, I, again, we can do this, and maybe table, put some of those other things forth later, but I would just really like to see some of these things. I mean, this has not been really reviewed since two thousand and two. I'm all for putting the fees where we feel like we need to put them. But I think there's a lot of things that have changed in the ensuing period that we should really think of. And when I look back at the two thousand and two, I'm not sure it's even redlined completely, word for word. So I would just want to go back and look at it. So we can decide whether we might want to look at the fees, and then, and I think having seen the level of enthusiasm around the lake, maybe even, you know, sitting down with some of the, our groups that are focused on the lake, and getting their input on this might be not only a goodwill gesture, but might really give us some good input, so.
Well, we also can add to this as we go along. This could be the first step, and then...
You can change it at any time.
Yeah, so I mean, this could be a living, breathing document, I guess that...
That's fine, as long as we keep our eyes on it as a living, breathing document. We haven't looked at it since two thousand and two.
Right, the recycling is a big deal. I mean, it's, you know, instead of just, everything becomes garbage and trash, and, you know...
I like, I like that there's carry and carry out. Maybe we can require, you know, certain recycling, or certain non-use of bottles, or something like that.
Or maybe a larger fee when they don't bring anything out.
Exactly, exactly. I think there's a lot of really great things we could bake into this, and maybe we just keep it as a living document and do that. But I would just want to keep our eyes on it. But thank you, Tony, for all the work you've done on it.
Ed, did you have a hand up?
I think there's a few things that stand out that I think we should talk about. A lot of them relate to the fees, and I think these fees are different than the fees that go, that we've talked about in the past, that are directly passed on to residents, because the fees that you're identifying, especially if it's, say, five hundred or a thousand participants, it's these national charities, as you mentioned, that have deeper pockets to be able to provide these fundraisers, because they make a lot, fortunately. And there's just some of this, the, if they're utilizing the bandstand for any purpose, including electrical connection, they pay a hundred dollars, that's refundable. If they're using electricity, then they're using town resources. And so I don't think that that's the sort of thing that we, the town should be front, the taxpayer should be footing the costs for a large national charity coming in, and then us, you know, subsidizing that. And the other piece is, the cost, the breakdown, I understand that you've gone up for these fees relative to these big organizations that would come in. They just feel very small, and I'm thinking specifically, Steve, about, there is, in the latest contract for DPW, if I recall correctly, there was, for special events, there was a bonus built into the lead DPW employee.
Right, they will not be here for this. Those are for town-wide events that we're manning, like Holiday Stroll, Fourth of July, the Festival Italia. There's no DPW coordinator for this.
Like when we have, though, we've had some sort of events where DPW has been present, like on the Common.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not like a coordinator for, that's not what that's for.
Okay, so that, the town's not paying that fee to that, or that, okay. It's, it feels like the, these amounts are low for these outside organizations that would come in. I mean, if there's a thousand people coming in, I would have to imagine, you know, Tony, you had mentioned the wear and tear, which I totally, totally get, you know, reseeding, picking up trash, et cetera, that's left behind inevitably. I'd have to think that that's more than five hundred dollars for, you know, over a thousand people that are, you know, making use of the property. And again, these are not the small Wakefield organizations. These are the larger, you know, national groups that are coming in for these massive walks and the like, which is great to bring them to our town, but I, I think that this, that seems, seems low, taking that into account. The other thing that stands out is, there are no penalties in here for non-compliance. So, you know, there are no large deposits that are held, or stated penalties if they do leave their trash behind, for example, or if there is damage that, you know, occurs to benches or any of the grounds. I think that would also make a lot of sense to do that, you know, we're talking about mountains of trash. I think we need to have some sort of penalty or mechanism built in there. One, maybe that they're precluded from using the spot again, but two, there's, there's an economic reality to the town when there's non-compliance that I think should be considered. Two other just points, the last page where it talks about the groups that are excluded, it just says, "See Fourth of July activities." And that, you know, a read of that would say that anything related to the Fourth of July is, does not have this, these fees associated with it. I think we should be equally specific if we're identifying, you know, particular groups in town, you know, if they're town groups or organizations, because that's like the West Side. That's, you know, the Independent State Committee and the like. But that doesn't mean that, you know, it's X, Y, or Z charity coming in and trying to do something on the Fourth. And another piece, too, just from a reading of it, the four pages in where it's subsection starts with three, it says, "All applicants that utilize the town's parks," and then it goes on. I actually think that should be uppercase D, because in looking at that, Tom, it's, that would be applicable to all, because as I see it, we've identified groups as A, B, and C. Group A being neighborhood use, B being limited local organizational use, and C being public use. C being public use would be the larger organizations. But then if you look below C, we have one and two, which is appropriate for C. But then... But then three is really applicable to all, as I read it. So that would be, I think, an uppercase D, you'd bring that over, and then everything would fall below D, because otherwise, that would only apply to, to C.
I think that makes sense. I haven't seen this before, but... I guess I'd suggest also, while, well, the thoughts in my head, um, a copy of these regulations ought to be given to anybody who, who inquires, but also they ought to sign off on a, like, a single sheet saying, "I've read the regulations, I agree to abide by them."
Right. Yeah, there is, there is a penalty at the, uh, number, just after Rule 20, the penalty of the $200, General Laws, Chapter 45, Section 24, I think that's, it may not be enough, I mean...
Yeah, well, those, that's the penalty for Rules 1 through 20, but those are, those are separate, I mean, they're a part of this, but they're, they're incorporated into it, but they're really separate from the, what we're talking about here.
Okay.
I mean, might it make sense to maybe just table this, so, Tom, you can take a look at this, we can incorporate these few additions into it, and then bring it back to the next meeting, would that, would that be okay, Tony?
Sure.
Sure, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, all right.
Because that way, we just...
But I don't want to...
I agree, I'd like to take a...
At that point, then we could incorporate in any other input, and then just have it so that it's as robust a document as we can, and it'll only be, what, two weeks?
If we can, yeah, hopefully we can get it done for the next, you know, the next meeting, the 29th.
Why don't we do that, because we have the feedback back now, I think a lot of, you know...
Okay.
A lot of thoughts have been put into this already, clearly, it's, it's a very comprehensive document. But let's just refine it a little more, so it's right where we want it to be.
You okay with that, Tom?
Yeah.
Does that work?
I'd like to bring it to a close on the 29th, though. I don't want any other groups to slip under.
Right. Okay.
And Steve, could you just let them know, groups that were interested, and just let them know that we'll have the rules and regulations issued on the 20th? I can't imagine between now and the 29th, there's any group that's...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so just, well, let's just have a moratorium for two weeks and then come back on the 29th, and then go forward from there, and you can let them know they'll have the rules at that point.
That's good.
Like, can we close and table this?
Okay. Paul, sir.
You go.
No, no, I'm not speaking.
Moving on.
Um, oh, thank you. Steve, can you also add for our next meeting? Um, it would be great to actually have a list of who, um, was approved in 2017 and 2018, um, because that would, and just, you know, kind, kind of a list of how big they were and what weekends. I'd love to know, are we talking about 20, um, we talking about 40 weekends kind of events? That would be great, just to have that list, and how, I don't think they're massive, they're not, nonprofits aren't as wealthy as sometimes we think, so I just want kind of that list.
Yeah, we, I, I have it here, and I'll, we'll put it in another panel.
Thank you, yep.
Paul?
Now she did trigger a question.
Okay, good.
Now, we are discussing, um, events that actually are conducted on, said the lower Common. But what about the events that start off at Cummings' property at the other end, but utilize the street for their event, and the sidewalks for their event? Are they covered by something?
No.
No.
Because they're on private property.
Only when they, only if they stay on Converse property. So, if there's a 5K road race, they are running across our property in order to conduct that road race.
Sometimes we don't know when they're running until they're running.
Well, well, so, so you could have, you could have a, a thousand people doing a walk at the same time someone's doing a 5K run. That's, because we're not regulating everything.
Good point, Paul. So?
Yeah, there are things we can't regulate.
Okay.
You know, it's a great pond, we can't keep members of the public out or off of it, even if they don't happen to live here. It's a public way, all members of the public have the right to go there. The Common is open to the whole of the public, not just the Wakefield public, we can't restrict. Uh, so we really have to look for chokeholds here. So if they want to use the electricity on the bandstand, we got them. If they want to set up a tent somewhere, we don't have to allow that ever, but we can, we've got them if they want that permission, so.
Okay.
Okay, now, with respect to road races, some of the bigger ones, of course, need whole roads to be shut down, they need police assistance, though, so we have a chokehold there. Uh, there is, on the other hand, a 24-hour road race in August where it, it, it sort of seamlessly blends into the people who are walking around the lake. You'd never know that the, a road race was happening most of the time. And I don't, if they, I don't think that they, if they've got the use of, uh, the Cummings' property, would ever need our approval.
Right.
And just to clarify, our next meeting is the 26th, not the 29th.
27th.
I don't know why you guys are doing Thursday meetings, but it's Monday.
Yeah, we just had 14 and figure that's it, yeah. Um, okay, no, it's good, Tom, thanks. Good points. Anything else down the other side here? No? Okay, so, we were at the, um, we had a, a motion, and we had a second, and then we stopped, so. Get a motion to table.
Make a motion to table 2C on lake events until the meeting on the 26th.
And we had a second from somebody already, second, okay. And all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, that was good. So D, 2D, the menorah, possible discussion and vote regarding request of the menorah, menorah on the Epicomment from Sunday, December 2nd, 2018, to be lit for eight nights. This is the third year, Steve?
Third year, yep.
So, I think it's a great event, I think it's, I missed it by 10 minutes last year, I think there were only 10 people left when I got there, but I think it's a great event, I'm not sure anyone has any, uh, specifics on this, but I, I think there's no reason we don't do this, but... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I couldn't imagine anyone saying no, but just, be fair. Okay, E is Gator Gallop 5K Banner. Possible, yep.
5K banner.
Second.
Discussion?
March 25th, 2019, um, April 6th, 2019, to be put up March 25th, 2019, taken down April 8th, 2019.
And it's already in training.
Yes, exactly, yes.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. Okay. Why don't we just go to the one-day liquor license?
Yeah, we'll just hold off on 3A, because Council is coming for them.
Right, okay. So, um, we'll move on to 3B, the one-day liquor license, request for a one-day liquor license on January 13th, 2019, from 11:00 AM to 4:30, the Americal Civic Center for Baby Shower. I wanted to say baby shower, we finally now know what these events are, which is great, whoever wanted that. This is awful quick, I wanted to say that, you know, it's very important we know what the heck is going on in our town. Okay, so, um, discussion?
You just want to correct the date to 19? 2019.
It says 2019, what am I?
No, not on the application.
Oh, in the application, okay.
Oh, okay, okay. Noted, yeah, thanks, Ed.
You can't have it 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The baby shower, appreciate you not opposing that. Okay, um, approval of the minutes, regular minutes, possible vote to approve the October 29th, 2018, regular board minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none?
Oh my gosh, are we done, almost?
For almost, so, you know what, though, so why don't we just go into...
On the table.
Yeah, let's go on the table. We have to go a little backwards here, uh, for a minute, but... So, matter is not anticipated by chairperson within 48 hours of meeting. Julie? You look like you want to go.
I'm ready.
I mean, go, like, to the conversation, not leave.
Um, having been at the high school golf banquet last night, I just thought I would congratulate all of the fall sports, which are, I think, now substantially complete. We had some great high school teams, including a really great girls' swimming team that is breaking records, and most of them are only freshmen, so I think we're going to have a very, very strong, um, swimming team, and maybe some rumblings of a pool needed in town. Um, I think cross-country also had a great meet last week. Um, Thanksgiving's coming up, and obviously our football team will be playing. Um, in addition, there's an interfaith celebration, um, the Wakefield Clergy Council is holding a interfaith service on Thursday, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, the 20th, so next Tuesday, at the Methodist Church. Um, and the chair of the Human Rights Committee is the guest speaker there. Um, I just want to thank everybody for a great town meeting and election, I don't think we've met since then, and thank Betsy and the whole team, um, for pulling all of that crazy week off. Um, and, um, I don't think we've officially announced that Jen McDonald has joined, um, Town Hall. She's the new communications person, picked from a, um, I understand, a, a great, um, group of applicants, and I, I am really happy you can really, if you're looking at the website, you can already see the differences. There's really up-to-date information posted there, um, great graphics and information coming through social media as well. So, thanks, Steve, um, for keeping your eye on that. Um, and Cinderella opens tonight from the high school, too, so now through Sunday, Cinderella, it's supposed to be an amazing show, so if anybody needs anything to do this weekend, that's a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Ed?
First, I, I want to echo Julie's, um, thanks to the town clerk's office, they ran, um, a great, a great election, certainly. And, um, in, in hearing about all that's going on in Florida, it's nice to know that we have such great staff at the helm. There's no recounting and, and the like, so, thank you to, um...
No hanging chads.
No, not, nothing of the sort, so thank you to, to that staff, which has done, always does a great job. Also, the Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee is seeking three, uh, applicants at large, three community members at large. That, um, has already been posted on the town website, if you go to the homepage, you'll see it. It's also, um, on Facebook feeds, and it's also been submitted to the item. I don't believe it's, it's run yet in the item, but should be running, um, in the item as well. The, uh, application deadline for that is December 14th, and anyone interested should submit a letter of interest and a resume, um, to Sherry Dalton, and, and her contact information is, is, again, on the website, uh, on Facebook, and will be in, in the item as well. And that's a really good opportunity for members of our, our community to be involved with, um, that, that assessment. So I welcome everyone to, to apply. And finally, I just want to wish a, a happy Thanksgiving to everyone in, in town, and go Warriors. Thank you.
Also echoing, Betsy and her crew did a fabulous job. Um, apologizing to everyone for coming in late, uh, the orange line was not, was not cooperating from Boston this evening. And hopefully, everyone will have a peaceful, lovely Thanksgiving. That's all I have, my brain is not quite developing.
The orange line, you mean it normally works well?
Well, no, it doesn't. It was just particularly difficult tonight, yes. Um, but anyways, have a great holiday.
Thank you, Ann. Tony?
I'll be brief as well, but I want to thank, uh, Tom Stapleton and his crew for a wonderful event last night, um, their annual meeting. Fantastic, well-attended, great food. Betsy, Denise, and Rosemary, just a great job, uh, for that crazy week of town elections. And again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and, uh, we'll be back here on the 26th.
26th, correct. Maureen's laughing, she's ready.
Echoing what everyone has said, um, thank you, Betsy and your team on elections. We had, uh, 12,000 people voting, and early voting was really successful in here, um, in, in Wakefield. Other towns chose not to be open on the weekends, and Betsy and her team were open 10 days in a row, and I really think that added to be the ease of people going and voting, so thank you to everyone. Um, uh, we're gonna, we talked about it at our last meeting, but I also want to thank everyone in, uh, Wakefield who voted yes on 3. It passed across the state, and we have stood up to protect civil rights for our neighbors and friends in town. So thank you to everyone that did that. Um, I want to take a moment to thank Steve and Sherry for all your work on town meeting. Um, it is the Super Bowl of what you guys do twice a year here, and we survived, we won, so thank you for all of that work. Um, uh, a, a little late, but happy Diwali to everyone that was celebrating in town, happy Thanksgiving to folks that are celebrating.
Thanks, Maureen. Paul? Would you like to share some thoughts with us?
Everyone's sentiments that have already spoke, I mean, there's no sense on repeating verbatim. Um, we have a lot of upcoming activities going on. Thanksgiving, of course, is, um, one of the foremost that we'll all enjoy, hopefully. But let's not forget that the 24th is, um, Shop Local Saturday. So that's a big, big start to the, um, shopping season for a lot of the small shops, small businesses in the town, and we should do our best to support them and get the community to embrace, um, the brick and mortar establishments that are here within the town. So, uh, shop small, shop local, spend local, uh, do what you can as far as possible, um, in trying to make us, put a smile on the shopkeepers' faces by entering the business. Other than that, um, that's it for now.
Excellent, thank you, Paul. Sherry, we bypassed you, I know you were anxiously waiting to say a few things. No, are you good?
I'm good, yeah.
Excellent. Uh, Tom?
Sherry and I are the hired helps, so we don't...
All right, it's nice to get a salary. Mr. Town Administrator?
Um, just a couple of things, I do want to thank everybody for their help at town meeting, and, and thank for the, uh, council for their support. On everything, it's, um, I, I say it, it is a Super Bowl, but it's an interesting Super Bowl, because it's not always played by your playbook. So, uh, but that's the way that government is, and, uh, I do thank the citizens for coming out, particularly to talk about, um, bylaws and charter changes that are very dry and, and, uh, you know, maybe not exciting, but they, at the end of the day, people, uh, do get what they vote for, so it does work out, uh, very well. Um, and now that, that town meeting is behind us, um, not resting on our laurels, Councilor Rob Dombrowski, we are starting our process for our next town meeting, which will be in April. April 29th will probably be the date that I will ask you all to set a town meeting for, um, because, uh, because of the way the charter reads, uh, that probably is a date that it should start. And we are working on the budgets, and we'll be working on the budgets, uh, for 2000, fiscal year 2020, um, starting now. We are doing them now, so, uh, I will be sending out to a schedule of what, how we think the budgets will fall for presentation in front of this board, starting in January. Uh, I'll be sending that out to you tomorrow, um, along with the schedule for what's going to be heard, really up through town meeting. So, please, um, contact me, contact Kevin, those of you that are liaisons, talk to your departments, to see what your priorities are in the budget, what you would like, uh, to be talked about, and would, would like us to, uh, put together, because it is your budgets, after all, we just, we just put them together for you. I will probably, uh, have a, kind of a global presentation, uh, to the council at our meeting in December, just to kind of whet your appetite over the Christmas season, so you can, uh, see what's going on. Uh, but that's, you know, I would love to have some questions and some priorities from you all, so I can put that in there. It really helps us in putting that together. Last thing I'll, I'll talk about, I'm trying to stretch this out, is, Mr. Terny, Grail comes. He's here, is, um, at our next meeting, which is on the 26th, which is a Monday, we will be having, um, our state delegation in. Uh, so, again, if there are any, um, questions, uh, that you would like to ask them, please prepare them. Uh, prepare yourselves, don't necessarily prepare them, uh, for them, and, uh, you know, unless you think it's something technical that they need to look at, so certainly we'll, we'll give them that courtesy. Um, I think we have a, a very good delegation that works very well together, and they're happy to come here and answer our questions and work with us, so. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm set.
Mr. Mayor, that was wonderful, as usual, um, just a couple of things. Oh, no, no, great, you had, you had. I doubt it.
Um, Tom Stapleton from WCAT just wanted me to remind everybody, he's absolutely right, that the, um, football game on Thursday, the Thanksgiving game, will be streamed live on Facebook and on cable, so.
I definitely wasn't going to say that.
Okay, my apologies.
So, I also want to thank everyone for town meeting, I think it's a, it's a great event, it's very interesting, as Steve says, it's no real playbook. I want to thank in particular also Dan Lieber and his Bylaw Committee, they did a great job. It's a lot of nitty-gritty, um, changes that only Dan really could love, um, for a year and a half, so I think he's done a great job, and his committee also. Also, John Carney, I think that was the right choice, Ann, way back when we were choosing, uh, the chairperson. He may not have thought so, but I already, um, logged him in for 10 years from now, he's willing to do it again. So, John? John, 10 years, thank you very much for volunteering again. So also, just to wrap up the Veterans Day event, the, uh, Wakefield Coral Society did a fabulous job, as did the Wakefield Chamber Singers, the Wakefield Wind Ensemble, and, uh, great speakers, um, MC J, J Panett was great. It really is an event that everyone should go to every year, it's so important to the town to show our, uh, love of the vets, and, uh, you know, paying respect by going is one way to do it, but also, the event's a lot of fun. I mean, you're tapping your toes to all the different songs, and it's, it's fun. And if it's raining, that's, it doesn't matter. But thank you all for going. So, we have a letter from the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District. I wanted to read to, to Mr. Mayor. Please accept this letter as an invitation to be part of our new building committee. Our first meeting for this year will be held on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, at three thirty P.M. This meeting will be to review MSBA guidelines for the project and also to introduce the committee members to each other. That's from David DeBarry, Superintendent Director. Also, in connection with the, the fire that we had, the tragedy recently with the First Baptist Church, our chief, Chief Sullivan, wrote a lot of letters to a lot of other chiefs for helping the town. I just wanted to read this so you get the impact of what it means to the chief. This one was to the Redding, in particular, Redding Chief, Chief Burns. I wanted to take a moment and thank you for the assistance of your department during a seven-along fire at the First Baptist Church, Eight Lafayette Street in Wakefield, October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Your firefighters responded quickly to the scene, performing whatever tasks I assigned to them with enthusiasm and skill. Your engine company took an important position on Lafayette Street feeding my ladder one. I want to particularly thank Assistant Chief Paul Jackson for his efforts in monitoring operations at the rear of the church. I also want to thank you personally for helping me at the command post with any tasks that needed to be performed. Together with the other mutual aid companies, your efforts directly led to the saving of numerous exposure, exposure properties, including Town Hall, Artichoke's Restaurant, McDonald's Funeral Home, and approximately a dozen condominiums and apartments nearby. I am grateful that such capable and competent assistance is available to Wakefield whenever it is needed. Chief Michael Sullivan. I mean, this is such a tragedy, but as Chief Sullivan was the MC of the event, I, I've only heard great comments that he did such a wonderful job under a very stressful situation. You know, many people either attended the church there, were married there, or just looked at it as they ran by or walked by over the years. And I think it's really important that people know the chief. And we also need many towns to get through every year. Hopefully, we'll need seven-along fire, you know, situations in the near future. Sure, sure, Tony.
I also want to thank the captains that read the Pledge of Allegiance at town meeting. And he echoed the tone from his guys that, you know, they love to do it. I mean, they got recognition that they feel like, you know, that was overdue to them. And I think going forward, we don't, no longer have Phyllis, that maybe we do designate, you know, a group to read the Pledge of Allegiance going forward for town meetings in two thousand and nineteen and years on.
Sounds good. Okay, so that's it for me. So, Mr. McGrail, I see you're here. Thank you for coming tonight. Want you to wrench your stuff up? Welcome.
There are three chairs.
Oh, sure, yeah. No, I'll come up if you want.
There are three chairs.
Yeah, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me. Mr. Mayor told me this was a tryout for Magnum P.I.
Wow. Mr. Mayor never lies though. But I wanted to say, you know, thank you all for coming in tonight with Brian. Brian's here most nights, I think. But really, the main thing is that we try to get a lot of folks to come in, their own businesses in town, just to get a, an update, see what's going on and what's new, what's improved, as well as say hello. So, calling you in is, is much more important to say hello than anything else. And we do like to keep tabs and make sure, we're not missing the boat if you're building new buildings or have plans like that as well. So, it's not just on licensing and permitting, at least on my, my part. That's my, my spiel. Ann, did you want to, anything, oh, the orange line's kind of rocked you.
I know, honestly. It just sucked the life out of you.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I, this was postponed because of some concerns that were raised, Brian, and others may get into them. But not about, I haven't heard concerns about the restaurant or the bar, but just to, to let you folks know that the amount of calls that are happening, that Chief, Chief Smith, if it's accurate, and I don't know if we have actual numbers. We do. Yes, okay. So, the amount of calls that happen seem to be greater than at a lot of other businesses. And that certainly takes resources out of the town, you know, if it's more heavily weighted. So, that was the concern, I think, mostly, that, at least for me, just to, for us to hear from, is that Lieutenant Scory?
What's that?
From the police who can report maybe a little bit better on some of, just the numbers.
Lieutenant Scory.
Yeah, Lieutenant Scory. And it's, you know, we can bring him up after. But that's from my perspective. That's why I think it was important to, to have you here.
Sure. Tony?
That property is the gateway to our community for, you know, a lot of traffic, you know, coming into our town. And I think it's important for this board to know, you know, what are your plans for that property? And that's one of the things I want to hear coming from, you know, you all and Brian. And just let us know what your intentions are. It's, it's a beautiful piece of property as far as geographically where it is. It's right off the highway. You have access to one-twenty-eight. You have access to the lake. So, I, I guess what this board wants to know, what are your intentions or what are your long-term ideas for that property?
It's also a great place to start the parade.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Paul, were you raising your hand down there?
When it's my turn.
It's always your turn, Paul.
Ah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Paul.
Mr. Nygros, Kat, nice to see you, Brian. When this discussion first started for me, it was the, the number associated with the address that caught my concern. And it was, tried to figure out what was the numbers relating to. So, my first question to both the chief and to Lieutenant Scory was when calls originated in that area, if it was five ninety-five, if it was five ninety-nine, or if it was six oh-seven, whatever the number may be, how many of them actually had Lakeside as a call? And when that number was given to me, my concerns on all the applications went away because the concerns were never within the building. Okay? And that was the key then. There were no calls for disorderly conduct within the building. There was no calls for an arrest within the building. There was no brawls within the building. Most, if not all, of the occurrences happened either in the parking lot, or behind Mr. McGrail's property, where your business is. It was in other areas. So, once I heard that, it was like, well, what's in question with the two applications that are before us? What are we here to decide? They're looking for a pool table. I'm ready to vote yes for the pool table. As far as the hospitality area, I, I am not sure what we're looking for. I can see where the concern is by the numbers that were handed to me the other day. But I, I'm trying to figure out where the rest of this is. I wait for the lieutenant to really say, for fact, to all of us, what, what it really is. But from what I've heard from the chief and from the lieutenant, I don't see where there, there is a restriction necessary. I mean, Gene, you've been doing business in this town for as long as I've been in the town. I mean, I've worked with Kat on multiple boards. So, I mean, they run a, a nice business there and I've never been in the building on a professional stands where there was ever any occurrences that I can remember. I mean, that's where the chamber still has the, chamber's still doing the meetings there. And so, we were there, you know, the chamber meetings all the time and I just never heard, saw any occurrences there. But that's my two cents on the matter at this point.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Paul. Ed?
First, thanks for coming. When this had come up a few months ago, I think that it was a culmination of a number of community concerns that had been raised. I know to me personally, and I believe others on this body as well. And I want to be sure that we're distinguishing the perception from the reality. And the perception certainly, and I know it on social media and the like for what that, you know, for what value you might give those posts is that there's, there's not, there's not, that Lakeside Inn is, is not a good neighbor for the community. And I want to, you know, better understand exactly, again, what the facts are relative to that and make sure that the perceptions are consistent with the reality here. I have spoken to Chief Smith multiple times over, over recent months relative to this property. And I'll defer to Lieutenant Scory to give us more of the detail. But my understanding is somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred fifteen calls during the period that was, that was looked at, which was a higher number of calls, but understanding that five ninety-five North Avenue, because it's right off of the highway, there could be accidents, there could be other reasons why there is activity there. So, it's not that Lakeside Inn is, is the precipitator of all of those calls. That said, there is also a lot of activity going on. I know that there have been multiple overdoses in the parking lot. I know that there's at least one that's been fatal, if not multiple. There haven't been more, mostly because of the, the advent of Narcan, which has avoided more casualties relative to that. There, from my speaking with Chief Smith as recently as this, this afternoon, he's, he said that the Lions, the, the, a good proportion of the, of the calls that they've, they've identified do relate to disturbances and disturbances within the hotel itself. And I'm separating the hotel from the, the bar restaurant because as I understand it, the bar restaurant does not have a reputation within the police department of, of being problematic. But I do know that the hotel has had a number of occasions where there have been disturbances and a disproportionately higher number, I think, by most accounts. I know it was just within the past couple of years that, I think just before our officers had tasers, there had been officers that were even injured, you know, in an altercation relative to someone on the hotel property. So, I think the concern that, that I have and continues to be the case is not on, you know, whether there should be a granting of a pool table, but instead, to whom are we granting this pool table and what steps are being taken to try to minimize the impact, the negative impact that, that some bad players or bad actors that are on that property may be having? Because it is one of the gateways to our community, to our town. And I think that the perception and reality need to align. And I'd like to see, you know, and hear what you as business owners are doing to advance, you know, a better reputation, to be a better neighbor and what sort of processes or policies you have in place to try to avoid all these disturbances. And that, you know, it's, a lot of times, it's, I guess drunken people that are, you know, yelling in the hotel. And I know that some of that is inherent in a hotel, undoubtedly. Also, when you're off of the highway, that's inherent. But there's a lot of other activity that I'm not going to get into all the details right now. Relative to that, that causes me concern and I know it's a reflection of a general community concern that has been around for, for a good while now.
If I could just say one, one thing too, the social media part though, definitely. I was called a fascist last week. So, I think the social media, we can't really give much credibility to that.
That's just one aspect. I mean, I, I've heard from people directly. You know, people, I've heard people talk about, you know, Lakeside Inn and whether or not, when they have guests in town, they would have their guests stay at Lakeside Inn and like. So, there's definitely a, a community perception. It goes far beyond social media. I mean, this, my comments are not, are not informed or driven by social media. I just mention that as just, just, you know, but one of several ways in which it's been communicated. So, I think if you could speak to that and more importantly, going forward, what, what the path looks like so that we can know what kind of a, a neighbor we're going to have going forward, I think that'd be really helpful. And obviously, I want to hear Lieutenant Scory as well because I know that he has data and I think it'd be interesting to, to have him present that.
And I actually would like to hear Lieutenant Scory speak first because this is all hearsay. You guys are telling stories and I actually have never gotten a complaint. And I actually, it's, I, I would love to hear Lieutenant Scory just speak and then you guys respond to that.
Does that make sense to you, Brian, as well? I don't know how you...
Couldn't be fobbed from the truth and there aren't any statistics that back it up at all.
I actually, I, I am hoping Lieutenant Scory backs you up in that.
Did you want to, do you want to speak or do you want to have Lieutenant Scory give?
No, whatever the, whatever, whatever's, whatever the council's preference is, you know, if council wants...
You can bring up all the handsome men from the back.
Can I sit here? Can I stay here?
Yeah, I can stay right next to Lieutenant Scory, sure.
You just want the spotlight.
Yeah.
I think he's gonna steal, I think he's gonna steal my thunder because I know what the answer is. I've done a lot of due diligence and research on this.
Lieutenant Scory, thank you for coming too.
Half my presentation might go away.
Thank you for having me. So, I did hear the number of one hundred fifteen calls for service to that particular address. But let me break this down for everybody to understand. The, the Lakeside Office Park address is run from five ninety-one to six oh-seven. If I were to research each one of those addresses in our computer-aided dispatch system, there'll be multiple calls for each one of those addresses. Because anytime we need to log a call for service, it needs an address. It either, it either needs to be an intersecting street or it needs a street number. So, for instance, if an officer makes a traffic stop on North Ave and they enter that into the computer, it needs a street number. So, for the Lakeside Inn, their street address is five ninety-five North Ave. Researching back to January first of two thousand and seventeen, our computer system has a total of one hundred fifteen calls for service with that address attached. When I broke those numbers down, I researched each one of those calls to see exactly what they were. Sixty of those were motor vehicle stops on North Ave. Eight of those were motor vehicle crashes that either occurred on North Ave or in the parking lot. Seventeen were medical aids, medical aid calls that occurred either in the parking lot or in the hotel. There were five mental health calls, two trespassing calls. There were some miscellaneous calls such as some of the disturbances were between patrons of the hotel arguing with cab drivers or fare. There were some wires-down calls, some disabled motor vehicles. There were six arrests that actually occurred in the parking lot. And to try and explain that, any address that we have that's close to the highway generates a lot of arrests. There's a lot of criminal activity that takes place right off the highway. And that is a large parking lot right off the highway. And there was one, there was actually one arrest going back to January of two thousand and seventeen that occurred in the lobby of the hotel and that was the only arrest we had there. No calls to the bar, no calls to the function hall. We've had five, there were five disturbance calls. One of those ended up in the intoxicated person being taken into protective custody. One was a mental health call. There were two disturbances in the lobby. And there was one that occurred in a room. And those were five disturbances in almost a two-year period. There was reference to officers being hurt at a particular call. That goes back to January first of two thousand and fourteen when that case happened. There was a disturbance in a room which resulted in the officers trying to make an arrest during that arrest. There was a, there was a fight that occurred and two officers suffered minor injuries.
Yeah, that's great information. That's really, yeah, the highway really plays a role, I mean, right there.
If I can add to that?
Sure, Brian, sure.
You know, we took a look at it and compared it to Audubon Road where, you know, another facility is. And the numbers are very similar and higher in some instances in that area.
Right.
And I don't know, you probably know the property referred to. I have no specifics on that property. I'm just talking about that area.
Right.
The Audubon Road. Because I think it's done in sectors, correct? Some of the calls are calculated in sectors.
We do it by address. But if you were to partic, take particular addresses in that north area of town, the call volume would be higher because there are certain crimes that occur directly off the highway in quick-and-out parking lots.
No, that's great. Thank you. I mean, some of, when this came up a few months ago, I actually wanted to give the license to the, for the pool because I could separate it, but the chief at the time raised a number that made me just pause. And that's why, and it was indicated that it seemed to be a little bit more than other properties in Wakefield. So, that was pretty much, I mean, that, that was for me, the reason why I just wanted to check in. Those, the numbers you just laid out, Lieutenant Scory, don't concern me that much frankly because it's, a hotel like that is going to have these kinds of issues. A parking lot off the highway is going to have quick in-and-out drug transactions. You cannot stop that. Perhaps, you know, lighting or, but it's, it's going to happen. That's, that's, that's where it happens. So, the amount of calls are not as alarming and I just, you know, I think, I echo what, what Peter said. I could give...
Two cents.
I know, I, it's, I'm tired. I could care less, what people say on social media. Could care less because of, I could just care less. So, we have the facts here and I really appreciate you coming. For me, it's a no-brainer to give you the, the licenses for the, for the, what you're asking for. And I think just, you know, to, to keep an eye on things and you call the police clearly and they're glad to come help you and, and just to know that, you know, we want it to be the best property it can be, the gateway to Wakefield. I'm sure you want it to be the, the best it can be as well if you... I'm sure you want it to be the best it can be as well, if you have any, if we can help out in any way, I'm sure we'd be happy to. My two cents.
Mary.
In front of us is approving a pool table license. Do you make a, is there a recommendation based on everything you said?
I can tell you that in over eighteen years of working in the town of Wakefield, I have not personally responded to a call at that local store before.
Thank you. And so nothing at the pool table?
I would not have a call at the pool table.
Okay, no, I, I mean, that's the, that's the question in front of us, so thank you.
Well, actually, to be honest, I could, Paul.
Just real quick, someone mentioned that, didn't you start implementing a security, nighttime security, vehicle outside security? Is that true? So you are secure, you are now patrolling the property at night? Is that right? Okay, see, I, someone, I can't remember where I heard that, but.
Right.
So that, so if there are concerns going on there that we may deter the drop-offs coming off the highway, it's been implemented. How long has that been in place?
Are you asking me, Paul?
Yes, please.
I, I'm on, I'd have to guess, yeah, three months, two months, about two months or so.
So it's something that. No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. I, I appreciate it. But all I'm saying is that if there was something that was brought to their attention, it looks as if they are trying to address it to some degree. So if they, if they hired a security system, or whatever you want to phrase it, and now they're patrolling the property, I think that's going to be a deterrent to people going onto the property to begin with, that aren't going into the building. How's that sound? Because that's where I'm hearing that most of the infractions are.
Yes. It's also, if you're looking for security, we're looking for security. We've also instituted internal cameras.
Okay.
We're here about the hotel mostly, but it's also been applied and being improved within the last year or so. So that, you understand, we have not been in control of this property for that long a time, given the status of it. So that, so these things arise, and we meet them, and we try to improve the property all the time.
Thank you.
Just, thank you, Paul. Just to be clear, so the public knows as well that the security that you've hired is not the Wakefield Police Department. It's a separate security.
No, it's a separate security company.
Just so everyone knows.
I think, you may know this better than I, they are instructed not to engage people, but to call the police.
That's correct.
So they're, they're there to provide.
Sure.
An environment, but they're not, they don't have the capacity for enforcement.
No, they're.
Extralis.
More deterrent than anything.
Excellent. And I can add one thing that I bet no one else can say they've done. I actually lived there for fifty-four days. My son was five, we had a house being built, and so we were there fifty-four days, and he was very upset to leave. One room, parents were there, it was great, so.
I hope you were comfortable.
Very comfortable. I had a great time. I didn't want to stay, no offense, for more than fifty-four days. I wanted to stay in town in particular, but it was, yeah, very pleasant fifty-four days. It was time to go, though.
When was that?
That was ninety-eight.
Very good.
Ed.
Lieutenant, could you speak a little bit to the arrests and the medical aid calls and the mental health piece? And then could you offer, you know, what best practices, you know, entail for those sorts of issues? I understand geographically where they're located, and there's a higher traffic volume. But, you know, is it, you know, signs, property under surveillance, property under, you know, under guard? You know, what sorts of things can we do? Because my understanding is that a number of them were drug-related.
So there were, there were two overdoses, and two fatal overdoses. One occurred in the parking lot, one did occur in a hotel room. The majority of the, almost all of the medical aids, and I had to go through every one of these calls and read the narratives to each of them, were related to somebody recently having a surgery and staying in the hotel and having some kind of, kind of an issue, whether it be an infection or some kind of bleeding from the surgery. That's what the majority were. As far as the mental health calls go, I would say that our mental health calls are up everywhere. You could attach any address to a business, and I would say that our mental health calls are up. A lot of mental health people are transient. They tend to stay in hotels, and for medical issues, they need to talk to somebody. So they call us, we send an ambulance, we send them to the hospital, and that gets logged in as a, as a medical aid. That's how that works.
I'd like to add, too, I think that there is a facility in Redding that, I think, treats people. And because of the proximity of the hotel, they bring their families in and to stay. And, you know, I'd add, I've got to respond to the good neighbor comment that you repeatedly made tonight and in previous sessions. We have provided rooms for people without charge, who have sick children in Boston, can't get other accommodations. We've never looked for any credit for this at all. We don't look for money, we just do it. So the idea that we're not good neighbors, frankly, is hurtful to me. Didn't look for any, did not look for any credit at all, but certainly not looking for criticism.
Ed, was there another part to your question I missed?
Well, I'm just, going on that, so of the seventeen medical calls, the two fatalities would have been covered under the seventeen?
No, those are separate.
Those are separate.
The overdoses are logged in our system differently.
Okay, because you didn't identify any overdoses when you gave those numbers.
Okay, my bad on that.
Okay. Because, so there were two people that have died since two thousand seventeen on property.
Correct.
One in a hotel room, one on a property.
And one in the parking lot.
Okay. And how many other locations have had two fatalities since two thousand seventeen?
I know that we have had seven fatalities this year. I think there were eleven last year total. I don't know if any addresses had two.
Okay. I mean, take note that we're in the biggest opioid crisis than anyone could have imagined. So, you know, I don't know how as a hotel owner you can prevent somebody from having an overdose in their hotel room. You can't invade their privacy when they check in.
Any other comments, or, sorry, Tony, clear?
Based on what I've heard from Lieutenant Scory, I see no reason not to grant you these licenses. But again, going back to my earlier question, where do you want to be in five years? What do you envision that property being in five years? And I guess this question is for the owners, and, you know, Brian and Lieutenant, thank you.
Maybe I can, if I could, kind of start out, because I had planned on making a, you know, presentation on behalf of my clients, and it kind of went a different direction, which is fine, than I anticipated it might go. I can tell you that I have been friends with Gene, have had the pleasure of being a dear friend of his for a number of years. He's one of the most well-respected attorneys in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the area of law that he practices in. And he's a mentor to me, and has always been a good friend, and he's my landlord, so. Because, because, and I, I, my office is right across from the hotel, so I see it. And I've gotten to know Catherine, because, and she's become a friend, you know, this family goes back, they're part of Wakefield's fabric. They're part of the history, and they have a tremendous history of being great civic people, as I'm going to get into a little bit. And, you know, Gene mentioned the word, you know, hurtful. You know, some of the stuff that comes out on, on social media is dangerous. It's hurtful, it's harming. Things are said, and then you end up in hearings like this. They're repeated on television, maybe it gets worse. So I feel a need to kind of go into and talk about these folks and their business and what they do, to just kind of give you that perspective on, you know, we talked about being a good civic participant, a good corporate citizen. And they're the epitome of that, a shining example to other businesses that they should follow. You know, I have, you know, we've all dealt with stuff on social media. You know, I personally am a victim sometimes on social media, when my kids will come to me and they'll say, "Dad, can you believe what this person's saying about you on, on some Facebook thing?" And my answer to them is, "For Dad, it's good advertising." They can keep on saying it. But in any event, you know, I think, you know, where the property's going, you know, we can maybe touch on that a little bit as we, as I kind of make this presentation. As Gina mentioned, you know, his, these, this entity has really only been in control, full control of this property for five years. It's operated somewhat in conjunction with the office park. So, you know, you're not just dealing with a, with a hotel situation, you're dealing with an office park environment with more parking lots, more access, more buildings to be between. You have the lake, which is an attractive nuisance for certain people, that brings people in that want to, you know, sit on the edge of the lake. The other part of this is, you know, things happen on the property. The Nigros are inviting to the public on that property, sometimes to the aggravation and detriment of their own tenants. For example, people walk through the parking lot. I can't tell you the number of people, the public, that utilize that parking lot to park, to walk the lake or recreate, to access the water. They never bother those people. They welcome them. The number of people that use the toilet facilities in my office, it's somewhat aggravating to the tenants, why are these people here? Gene has a policy that we don't want to say, "Come in," but we, we don't throw people out. So I wouldn't want to, through this process, kind of discourage that, because, you know, you know, they could take the position that, you know, we don't want people on the property, because we're at risk that if something happens to somebody in our property, and they bring something in, we've got to really police with our security who comes on our property and not. And that could be harmful to, you know, everybody in Wakefield. They have done improvements in these five years, and I'm going to kind of go through some of these things. I don't know if any of the councils have the opportunity to visit the hotel recently. If you haven't, I, I think it would be a good idea for you to do that, and I think Gene and Catherine will welcome you.
Please do.
You know, come on down, and then you'll actually see it yourself, instead of just reading about it on social media and having people tell you certain things. Because when I go in that hotel now, I'm amazed compared to the way it was ten or fifteen years ago. Absolutely amazed at how nice it is and the type of folks that they're attracting, and the, and the improvements that they're doing in the office park where, where I am a tenant. And some of those things that they've accomplished is they refurbished the pool. You noticed that it was in a difficult state. They're in the process of finalizing permitting on that. There's some challenges on that because of ADA issues that they're working through, but they have put a significant investment in that. They've finished the back patio behind the hotel, which is beautiful, has lake views, is very welcoming to people. They have, all the bathrooms have been fully redecorated in the hotel. The awnings have been replaced. Access ramp to the entrance has been placed, it's all replaced, it's all new. The Lakeside Room and the Yorkshire Function Room have been fully redecorated. They're absolutely beautiful. Come on down and take a look. The air conditioning systems have all been improved and changed and replaced. So new air conditioning is being installed, or has been installed, throughout the buildings. All the public bathrooms have been fully refurbished. The corridors have been completely redecorated in the hotel. The lobby's been redecorated, and the flooring has been all updated. The window glass has all been replaced. They're in the process of refinishing the rooms. That's a project that they do room by room, because they can't obviously shut down the hotel. But that has been done, and there's masonry repairs that have started on the exterior of the building. So they're committed to this property. As far as the office park goes, there's a hundred and fifteen businesses that operate, operate in Lakeside Office Park. It's fully, pretty much fully occupied at this point. And I got to tell you, my business has been there for a number of years, and it's a resource. So, you know, when you talk about what could that property potentially become, there are a lot of Wakefield businesses in that office park. That park serves a very important function and purpose to a number of Wakefield residents that have their businesses in there. I can name a dozen off the top of my head that I see every day. And Wakefield's somewhat unique, because there's not a lot of office opportunity in Wakefield. There's not a lot of office rental spaces in Wakefield. You have, this is a large space, and then you have Edgewater Office Park. And you have some other office buildings that are available and mixed throughout the town. But as far as an office-type complex, and, you know, this provides a service for small businesses, for startup businesses. I was in Edgewater Park for a number of years, and the problem I found with Edgewater was it's a beautiful place, but the rent is a little bit different when you're trying to start your business, or at certain stages in your business. And it's somewhat difficult for some Wakefield businesses that are Wakefield-oriented, like myself, because you're kind of off in the no-man's land, not, not really near the downtown. Sometimes people have a hard time finding you down there, if your, if your business is really geared towards Wakefield. Although, you know, we all know it's absolutely beautiful and, and well-done, well-done down there. But getting into the corporate citizenship, and this is where, you know, I think Gene said, you know, some of the stuff is somewhat hurtful. Catherine, or Cat, is, you know, very humble. The Nigros are humble people. They don't like talking about themselves, and it's not easy to tell people all the great things that you do. "I do this great, and I've done all this." But it's easy for other people to tell you that, and, you know, and that's what I'm going to do tonight, because I have known them for, as I've mentioned, years. They're friends, and I'm just amazed at the contributions that they make to our community and, and the citizenship that they provide, not just to Wakefield, but to surrounding communities. To start, they're members of the Chamber of Commerce. Catherine is on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. As far as giving back to the community with their facilities, they're a place of congregation for the Mystic Runners Club. I see them there all in the summertime, you know, when I come out and I'm coming to your meeting, I say, "I should be with them, not coming to a town council meeting." Sometimes I envy them, but they open the parking lot in the facilities to them at no charge, to provide them a place to park. All these cars are parked in the lot, you know, and it's fine, but they open that parking lot, and if they weren't parked there, they'd be parked on North Ave. They'd be parked in neighborhoods. They'd be taking spaces up at the common and, and other places. They accommodate any charity or person looking to have a fundraiser for a charitable purpose. Their doors are open. Just ask, and they're always there for the community. They host the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence. They host them at the facility. They contribute significant money to that organization. They have over the years and anticipate doing so. They sponsor, they sponsor the Multiple Sclerosis Run. They're sponsors of that event. The Fourth of July staging area, they open up their facilities, their restrooms, their parking lot. They shut down, you know, I've had days where, you know, I need to go to work on the Fourth of July for something, and, you know, and I can't go, and that's fine. And the great thing about it is, their community and citizenship, the tenants there respect it, and no one complains about it, because we just all know it's great. It's good for the community, and most of us are, as I've mentioned, Wakefield people. Toys for Tots Nights, they, they schedule two a year and lead that charge. They charity raise money for service animals, and they participate in that. They match dollar-for-dollar money raised for scholarships by the Chamber of Commerce. They do that with their entity. They donate and support gifts for less fortunate children in the holiday season. They actually give five bikes away to, to the Wakefield Walk and shop for families that can't afford toys for their children at Christmas time and in the holiday season. They support a number of Wakefield athletic teams and youth programs. And they donate winter clothing for children. They, that operates out of the hotel. This one is, you know, I think somewhat timely with what you mentioned, you know, with everything, all the sensitivity to our public safety officials and the, and the fire, which just happened. They do a fireman and a firewoman appreciation dinner held to celebrate the department's dedication. Each of the four crews come to the hotel for steak dinners in February at no charge. They also donate mattresses to the fire station. They employ folks from the Horizon House, and in April of two thousand eighteen, they were honored for that, which I'll get in to a little bit. Gene mentioned, they serve as a safe shelter for abused people, free of charge. And, you know, I don't know if the Lieutenant's aware of this, but if the police department calls them and says, "We have a situation in Wakefield that, you know, maybe an abused victim, that we need a place for them to stay tonight," they open the door, find a room, no charge, no questions asked, and put them in there. They also do it for surrounding communities. So sometimes Melrose has reached out to them with that circumstance, and they open the door at no charge. They, you know, as far as the Nigros, you know, as a whole, I mentioned this family, this wonderful family, and as you can see, they're giving nature. They maintain, the family itself maintains two foundations. They have the Angel. They have the Angel Fund, which raises money for Lou Gehrig's disease, ALS, which has contributed over, believe it or not, $2 million to UMass Medical. They have the Helen Niagro Foundation, which provides monies for philanthropic purposes and missions, deeds, libraries, charities every year. You know, as far as, you know, local citizenship and recognition, you know, word spreads through social media. I can't tell you the number of calls that I received from local businesses today that said, you know, anything we can do to support Lakeside Inn or Niagro family, just let us know. You know, they're unbelievable citizens to this town. And recently, Gene was recognized and received the Chisholm Award from the Chamber of Commerce, which is a very distinguished award named after Jim Chisholm, who, you know, Jim, young Jim is a dear friend of mine, his father was a wonderful man, another great Wakefield family. And Gene received that award and this is, just to give you a flavor, this is the press release on that or the article. It states that Wakefield attorney Gene Niagro was a recipient of the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce James Chisholm Leader in Business Award at the organization's annual meeting held recently at the Four Points Sheraton in Wakefield. The James Chisholm Leader in Business Award is an annual award presented by the Chamber to a business leader in memory of the founder of J.C. Mocking Associates, who died in 2012. The recipient exemplifies the spirit of Jim's generosity, guidance, and support of local business and organizations. Attorney Niagro was selected to receive the award based on his involvement and support for the community as an attorney and his owner of Law Office of Niagro Pettibone and Lucas, the Lakeside Inn and the Lakeside Office Park, according to the Chamber. In addition to his generosity to local and area organization, he provides shelter and employment to those in need, is a supporter of the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence and Public Safety, donates the use of the hotel facilities and grounds for fundraising, races, walks, charities, organization, and is a generous donor to Wakefield sports and scholarship programs. I don't know where you're going to find a better citizen, to be honest with you. I sincerely say that. They've also been recognized, the Lakeside Inn itself, by Expedia, who issued a statement on this. They stated to who this may concern, the statement is on behalf of Expedia Group. To testify, the owners and management of Lakeside Inn have been wonderful partners since the beginning of their contract on July 1, 2015. Catherine Niagro, it's about time I talk about you a little bit, has been instrumental and diligent throughout this partnership. The property has brought in over 14,000 room nights year-to-date. 25% of their bookings are from international origins, which to me is really interesting, which kind of coincides with us trying to make Wakefield a destination place. We're bringing people in from the outside that maybe will go downtown and enjoy the downtown that is being so well revitalized at this time. They were recognized by the Massachusetts Clubhouse Coalition. They extended their sincere appreciation for providing valuable employment opportunities for members of the Horizon House. That award was given in 2018. They were recognized, Lakeside Inn, and I won't read it, but they were given certificates of recognition by our state legislature for their efforts and their contributions. And these were issued to the Lakeside Inn. One was in April of 2018 and another one was issued to Gene for the Chisholm Award in June of 2018. You know, the other aspects of this is they provide significant tax base. We have the room tax, which Wakefield has initiated. So the average taxes going back to 2017, this property's generating about $550,000 in taxes. It's also a very positive, has a very positive impact on the community as far as employment goes. There are 41 employees that work there and, believe it or not, the payroll is well over $1 million. This is not only a business, it's a viable business and an extremely successful business, contrary to what you might read on social media. But one other point that I'd like to add in addition to what Lieutenant Scory provided for information, we also did some diligence with the Fire Chief. We wanted to get some statistics on that. He sent some statistics, I think he might have sent them, we have them, I think he might have sent them to, I don't know if he sent them to you, Steve, or not. Yeah, but, so I had done due diligence and he was kind enough to reply with an email that I can read and it says, "Good morning, Attorney McGrail. This email is a follow-up to your phone conversation request for information. Attaches the information on hotel responses made by the Wakefield Fire Department for the last three years. As we discussed, neither," and he references another hotel, I don't like to say names, "nor the Lakeside Inn posed an excessive drain on services provided by the Wakefield Fire Department." Nothing's out of the norm. So I'm really trying to contradict what you might have read on social media. I think the story you're hearing tonight is a total different aspect to get into Council Longo's question because we don't like to avoid questions. You know, I think what the commitment is now is to keep revitalizing that facility, to keep investing in it. You know, they don't have a desire to change the use at this point. I can't tell you the number of clients of mine that have approached me to call Gene. And, you know, because that's, you know, what I do, as you know, and, you know, they are just very committed to what they do down there. Catherine, you talk about it, you know, she is the general manager of the hotel and you talk about a hands-on person. She's there at all hours. I get to work sometimes very early, sometimes I'll get there at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning if I have something to do. Her truck is there, it's always there. It's always there. So she's there, she really is working and, you know, she's the impetus for what's happening there, the revitalizations that's occurring. So there's really no plan for, you know, future redevelopment of that, just really to keep on making it better, as I think, you know, we presented some good information that that's occurring every day. So I hope that's helpful. I hope it's helpful for people at home to hear that on all the positive things, the positive things that are actually occurring at Lakeside Inn. This is not the Lakeside Inn of 20 years ago.
And I think that was hopefully a benefit to you that you were able to come and just give that presentation. I don't know what's said on social media because I don't read it, I'm not on the community pages. I just am disgusted by folks that sit there and throw thoughts out that are not based in fact. So I don't actually know the chatter that's run social media. I just know that we had a comment made at a meeting by Chief Smith that made me just want to ask questions about the number and I feel badly that I probably didn't dig deeper. But what was left with us wasn't what you reported, Lieutenant Scory. What you just said was, makes perfect sense for a property like that. I'm hoping with all the renovations, and I think some of us that have been in town, we think back to 20, 30 years ago, but the renovations will make people come, will make people rent the rooms out. I'm, you know, that room is gorgeous on the lake. I've been there for wave meetings and I had a question, do people cater in that room or do you provide? How does that work?
We cater.
You cater, okay. But I think that's a great, people in town don't think of that necessarily as a venue to have certain events and it really is beautiful. So thank you for letting us know everything. And I'm hoping more people in town now will listen, sit up and head over to Lakeside because I feel badly if on social media you're being eviscerated and I did not know.
And you couldn't be more gracious in your comments, but I couldn't help, I couldn't help but pick off the social media. Now, we all know Ed is a handsome guy, right?
Absolutely.
And we also know Steve is a very handsome guy, but this picture was posted and this gentleman was identified as Ed. So it's about, it's about as reliable as it does not be. Let me make a plug here, too. He's wearing an Angel Fund shirt.
Yeah, that's right.
This must have been the shirt by the fella. Angel Fund, by the way, is not in that.
That's what Ed looked like before.
You know, Donald Wong looks fine.
He looks great.
That's great.
The Angel Fund is not a national organization, it's a local organization, it's Wakefield-based. And Brian is right, we've given $2 million in the last two years. We have exceeded $10 million over the last several years. It supports Lou Gehrig's disease research.
You know, I think this might really just be a great commercial for you guys.
That's what I was thinking.
Marketing-wise, hopefully it is, taking it from me.
Come on down, you got to see it.
Well, no, not just us, but obviously, you know, you'll have the 4,000 people whoever watches during the week, you know.
If I can just add, Mr. Chairman, just one point, you know, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the police department.
Sure.
And Lieutenant Scory. Because he put a lot of work into this, obviously. I didn't know what he was going to say tonight, honestly. And I'm very grateful that they keep the records they keep. I mean, that's amazing to me that you were able to go back and decipher that. And through you, I'd like to thank him for being able to have that clear record, which obviously is reflective on what's actually. And Chief Smith, yes, I mean, the whole police department.
And there's no question.
Incredible record-keeping.
What calls were from, I mean, it's obviously crystal clear that it's not anything but a good business. Yes?
I mean, as the police department liaison, I mean, I've been speaking with Chief Smith about this for months, you know, certainly, and that's, I think, a big part of the reason why this came up. Why do you think it is then that there is that perception? I mean, the chief has raised it with us multiple times. There is that, there is a different perception than what you've presented tonight and amongst, it's clear to the chief, but also members of the community. And what is it that Lakeside Inn can do to change that perception?
Work hard, I don't know, I can't speak why this perception's on anything. I've never heard that perception. I haven't heard, I'm not a social media guy.
Let's back up because I don't want to use Facebook as a scapegoat here. This was not driven by Facebook comments. This was driven by the chief raising a concern multiple times relative to this location.
Ed, I've talked with the chief about this severally and he's explained, he's indicated to me, and there's no reason why I wouldn't believe him, that he's attempted to explain to you and to Tony on several occasions that how these break down. You use the word sector, it's a general area. These events happen by these addresses, they don't happen. There are motor vehicle occurrences, I think we heard that, that's it. I promise you, I promise you, we have never had an auto accident in our lobby, ever. We haven't had it. Hasn't happened. We don't have, the hotel is pet-free, I think. With some, I think we make exceptions every once in a while. We don't have any canine problems. If somebody gets locked out of a room, they generally don't call the Wakefield Police, they call the front desk. But those are the kind of things which are listed. If you look at the reports carefully, and they're readily available. The chief was very good again, I think, you're an attorney, they're public records, they're readily available, and if you just take a few moments and look at the different categories, they've got nothing to do with the hotel. And I think, and I think.
Two fatalities is not nothing. I mean.
Excuse me?
Two fatalities is not nothing.
Two fatalities are very serious and difficult things, but it's not due to anything that the hotel does. Good Lord may take me this very second, I don't know when that happens. We do.
You know, how many opioid incidents happen at the Boston Public Library? Isn't that, that's all over the media, that people go to the library to do opioids. I mean, that's a crisis that we're dealing with. It's not related to the hotel.
And you should be reassured that this staff is diligent about looking for problems when people come in the front door, looking and trying to accommodate people, whether they're legitimately being treated at a local medical facility or whether they ostensibly have a problem. It's, you, there's a statute which says we can't close our doors. Did you know this?
I do not know.
That we can't turn away people without, I'm sure that's within reason, but it's pretty broad in the way it's worded. Well, that means anybody who comes in the front door and, but you've got to be diligent about who those people are. They can't be, you can't have them in a position that they're going to hurt somebody else in the hotel or they're going to cause trouble. And I think the staff, I'm proud of this staff. I'm proud to be known as Catherine Niagro's dad because they're diligent people, they're well-trained and they care. They really care. They care. I'm proud of these guys.
I think we really have talked a lot, I think it's, hopefully it adds a lot.
Can we move? A second.
Okay, so again, I want this as an infomercial where hopefully you'll get a lot more business because of where your business is. First, second.
Can I ask that you make that motion that you approving the 2019 licenses?
Right.
Liquor, common vic, lodging and entertainment. Make that in one motion, that'd be great, Ian.
I move that we approve the 2019 licenses, the liquor, common vic, lodging. Lodging and pool tables.
And entertainment.
And entertainment, sorry. It's all about pool tables.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none?
And then the 2018.
And then the 2018, yes.
Oh, that's, it's the 2018, I'm sorry. I move that we approve the two pool tables, the 2018 license.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? So again, we'll have this WCAT tape for you to play on local TV. So hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Really, you guys, wonderful neighbors, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're happy, you don't need any pressure to have us come in, we're happy to address it privately, publicly.
Sure.
And I will end this, I know, but my family has been in Wakefield for just over 100 years, starting with, I'm the, I have four generations. So we're not in, we're not in contest, we're anxious to help and build and approve.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, nice seeing you.
Oh, you got, don't leave? I'd like to set up a tour. Oh, okay.
Cherry is never on camera, I watch these things.
She doesn't want to be. She's too busy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, WCAT.